Have no. No members of the public in person so far, other than Howard Young, who is temporarily here doing some technical assistance. But it looks like there are a number of folks. I think about 26 participants out. Calling in remotely. So how call the meeting to order and Jeremy, are you doing roll call?
Yes, I am. Councilmember Derwin.
Here.
Councilmember Alfs.
Here.
Councilmember Richards. Vice Mayor Werner Koff.
Here.
Mayor Hughes.
Here. Okay, first up on the agenda is report out of closed session from our April 13th meeting, Cara.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. There was nothing to report out at the last closed session.
Okay, thank you. And that brings us to item three, which is oral communication. Are there any persons wishing to address the council on any subject not on tonight's agenda? Now would be the time to do so. Speakers' time will be limited to three minutes. And because we have our new hybrid setup here tonight. Please bear with us if we have any technical trickiness. I think it should be pretty much the same as it's been for the last couple of years, but. We may run into some issues, so if you'd like to speak, please raise your hands now.
Mr. Mayor, the first speaker is Rita Comas.
Go ahead, Rita.
Well, I am happy to see that we finally have the hybrid system set up. I'm not surprised to see that there are no or hardly any members of the public there. Based on the communications that was posted to the town members. It was discouraged that people show up to the schoolhouse and, you know, be home and do it on Zoom. I thought that wording was. Was was a little odd, but I'm glad to see that it's now started. My my comment, I wanted to comment, I sent a couple of letters to the finance committee about the audit. The audit for 2020 and 2021 that has not been. You know, the public doesn't know what the status is of those two. And with the PPE money that we've received and the other government monies. And what we've been reading in the news of since COVID, all of these towns that are catching up on their audits and finding things. For best practices, financial practices, I just think that it's overdue. And I've sent three different notes to the finance committee, finance and audit committee, and have not heard one word back. I don't know what else to do. I know I sent my letter on to the town. And so the council members, I'm sure you've seen it, but please, please, please tell me what I need to do for the next step. Because I, as a citizen, I'm just concerned that there has not been an audit for 2020 and 2021. When I know that the audit company that we use, unless we've changed people. You know, they're working all through the pandemic and they're still working. So I just don't understand. And as a person that's been audit chair for another organization for many years. I'm just not seeing. Anything on the process, but I am quite disturbed that I have not received a comment back. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. I think staff has commented on this in the past, but Jeremy, do you have a response?
Yeah, thank you very much. First of all, Rita's letters in the digest as she requested, so people can look at it there. Secondly, I've had a number, I've had a few correspondences with Ms. Comas over email and have publicly stated. Where the audits were fiscal year 1920 and 2021 are, there's also going to be in this week's digest. That'll be published Thursday or tomorrow, Friday, some more information that people can take a look at. To repeat from before. The audit for 1920 was delayed for a variety of factors. Including the use of two different financial systems as we were working through those. There were scheduling difficulties. We had one member of our finance team upstairs, but we've been working on it slowly but surely. We anticipate having it done by June. The 2021 audit is only a few months late. You're just being having that done in September timeframe. There'll be no impact from the 2122 audit. And as it relates to ARPA funds and care, ARPA funds, which is the main bulk of the funds that we've received from the federal government. That's actually in a separate auditing scheme that doesn't go through our auditors. It means, thank you.
Thanks. Any more hands up?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there are three, five now. Next is Mary Hupkey, followed by Ellen Baranza. Go ahead, Mary.
Oh, I had two, two comments. One was. That. I think that Woodside and Menlo Park under the, under threat of litigation have both been. Cited for for there being a large representation. And I was wondering if anybody understood why we do not have district representation. But I'm, I don't need an answer to it now. I think I just want the record to show that there has been an inquiry. I think it would be a waste of our money to to face a litigation, the litigation that Woodside and Menlo Park have faced. I'm not a lawyer and I'm sure I'm out of line, but I, I want the record to show that it has been asked. The second question is, I think that in most organizations, a separate finance and audit committee are. Prudent protection for the organization. And that to have the finance committee and the audit committee, the same committee. Put you exactly in this situation where there's nobody actually responsible for getting that audit. Done to to make sure that we're spending the money to make sure everybody knows where the money is. And it's for the protection of the staff primarily, but also for the citizens. That we do audits and that best practice is an annual audit. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thanks, Mary.
Our next speaker is Ellen Baranza.
I just had something to say. I'm just again about fire and according to Cal Fire, there is no more fire season. It's an all year occurrence. And with that thought, I'd like to know why the town is not stepping up and acting on the new NIST study with regards to updating our fire building codes. The NIST study's findings clearly indicate what fire safety measures need to be updated in our building code to keep this town protected from fire. The NIST papers prove that our current fire building codes will invariably fail to protect the lives and properties of our residents and neighbors during a fire. I believe that the first responsibility of the town council is to keep the current town residents and land safe at all costs. If the importance of the information on the NIST paper cannot be understood, then I think we need to recognize the opinions of those that can understand it. With the council decreasing the residents on the wildfire preparedness committee and not replacing the residents who may have resigned over time. We are missing out on valuable knowledge and input by many brilliant residents who can contribute their insight in keeping us informed and safe. Let's, our town be a leading fire safe town on the peninsula and use the tools that are freely given to us, such as the information from the NIST study. And not decide belatedly after a fire that the practices that we should have followed. It seems ridiculously foolish that we have this information and that we would not adopt and make use of the facts in this new study that would save our lives. The council has previously ignored recommendations of Cal Fire, our own fire district in the Marit study regarding our fire safety. Please step up this time and adopt the recommendations from the NIST study, which might easily save our lives. Thanks.
Thank you, Ellen. I believe that the Woodside Fire Protection District is actively working on revising our building code along the lines that you're talking about. And we have a special meeting tomorrow at which they will be present and will no doubt as part of their presentation be talking about the updates that they have in progress to our code. Anybody else, Jeremy?
Three more, really hands keep changing. We're three, four, now we're back to three. Caroline Bertaga.
Go ahead, Carol.
Like many residents in this community, I love this town and will continue my time and efforts to protect it and protect the well being of its residents. Many of us are committed to safeguard this community, but many of us are not chosen to serve. Without any explanation, other than we're not fit the proper fit. PV residents who have been engaged in the last five years understand paid staff is taking over the decision making. Getting their ideas and facts from peers at neighboring cities like Menlo Park, Palo Alto and San Mateo. May I remind you, Portola Valley is unique and cannot be compared to any of those cities. Portola Valley has its general plan that was adopted in 2015. A general plan was created carefully to ensure that we don't lose our identity, keep our rural character, open space, maintain our trails and good governance based on volunteerism. It is the blueprint for the town's future growth and development. It addresses issues of importance to the community, set forth policies for conservation and development under all seven elements, additional concerns and special parts of town. The focus in the last years has been about housing. In 2012, our senior planner reduced arena housing from 74 to 64. Because she applied the warnings as stated in the general plan. As ACD director, former director Lynn Jacobs confirmed in 2013, Rena numbers are projections upon projections, not real numbers. We have reached our 64 units for cycle five in 2018 and continued building. Without upgrading our infrastructure and other needs to support more housing. We have asked to see the data that town staff submitted to ACD, resulting in the huge increase to 253 units in cycle six. But staff and other government agencies are ignoring our data request. Last month, we discovered the audit by the California State Controller and shared its findings. That HCD does not ensure that its housing needs assessments are accurate and adequately supported. PVs finally started to address the importance of wildfire and fire risk and the need for evacuation routes. But we are behind on so many other issues like emergency shelter, energy independence, reliable internet and other communication, water supply, water quality, water pressure, and not to forget sewer. We PV residents pay our taxes, which increase every year with the promise that things will be fixed. We have shared our concerns and presented solutions for at least the last six years. We ask you again to follow the guidelines of our existing general plan. And solve all ongoing issues before adding any more housing. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Valerie Baldwin. Valerie.
Go ahead, Valerie.
Hi, thank you for taking the call. I was wondering if the town council has considered joining the California Alliance of Local Electors. That are mostly in Southern California, but they had a big meeting last week and there were people participating from Los Altos and Palo Alto. And included the mayor of Woodside. They, I think they are the ones that tried to get enough signatures to get a petition on the ballot to revoke SB nine, but they failed, didn't get enough signatures. They said it takes tens of millions of dollars to get signatures to get on a ballot and they just couldn't raise that much money. But they are now trying to go through the courts to get both the SB nine and the Rena allotments reversed. And I was wondering if the town council could consider joining this. They thought if enough cities join in, it would only cost about $10,000 per town or city to join this effort. And in going through the courts to get these things reversed. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. My understanding is there is very limited room, at least as far as Rena goes for. A court based approach to changing the numbers, but Cara, I think you may have some commentary here.
Yes, would you like me to speak to that issue briefly?
Yes, please, if you're prepared to.
Sure. So this, this matter isn't agendized for council discussion. If the council wants to weigh in on the issue and decide to. Whether to participate in the litigation, we would bring it back as a separately agendized item. But I am aware of the Southern California litigation that challenges, there's one lawsuit that challenges. The propriety of SB nine that was filed by a group of. Charter cities and it's based on the charter city constitutional provision. That particular provision is not applicable to Portola Valley because Portola Valley is a general law city. So that, that litigation would would not, that legal theory would not apply to us if we were to join that lawsuit. There is another set of lawsuits that challenge the regional housing needs assessment allocation process. And those lawsuits were filed in Southern California. And by a big group of of cities. That were challenging the Southern California or the SCAG allocation. We are in a different council of governments and so we would have to file our own lawsuit challenging the A-BAG allocation. However, there is precedent that. Was decided a number of years ago that says that the allocation, the remedy for challenging the Rena allocation. Is an administrative remedy. What you are required to do under the statute is to appeal the allocation first to your council of governments and then to HCD. The. The trial court in the Southern California cases took a look at that California precedent and did find that. The court does not have jurisdiction to hear the cases and instead the remedy is to proceed with the administrative appellate route. So the court actually very recently dismissed the case filed by a group of Southern California cities. And then that particular ruling is now on appeal. I don't think that it's going to be successful based on, on that clear precedent that the administrative remedy is the proper remedy. Portola Valley is also not in a position to challenge the, the Rena allocation. Because San Mateo, none of the San Mateos County cities challenged the administrative. Allocation, challenge that through the administrative process. And so there is a defense called exhaustion of administrative remedies that would require a city who or town who is challenging. The allocation to first pursue the administrative remedy. Since the town did not do that, the court again would not consider this type of lawsuit. I also wanted to mention one aspect about. The HC, the HCD audit that came up. I know that there was some discussion about the. The potential double counting in terms of vacancy rates and overcrowding. And that was an issue that did come up in the Southern California lawsuit. And at this point, we have, we have looked at the substance of that issue. We think it's a risky issue to pursue. It was not explored in terms, in terms of the A-BAG region. We don't know what the results of, of a full blown audit would be. The audit itself did not apply to A-BAG cities and applied to other cities and it. Revealed both undercounting as well as overcounting. So there's no assurance that an allocation or, or an audit or litigation would result in a lower Rena number. And in fact, as the council knows, the. Prior iterations of the. Of the Rena allocation for Portola Valley were in fact higher. So there is potential risk that if we were to challenge this, the allocation would actually come back at a higher level. Not to mention that it would significantly impact our negotiating situation with HCD, which we have. Taken very seriously and have built up a very good working relationship with HCD. And are hopeful that we will have our housing element certified on time, given that relationship.
Thank you. Jeremy, next up.
Next up is Sue Shapu. There you go, Sue.
Welcome, Sue.
Unmute, all right. This piggybacks on Attorney Silver's last comments. She did mention we're a general law city versus a chair, a charter city. And my question is the pros and cons of each. What are the pros and cons? Of a charter city versus a general law city? And have we considered becoming a charter city and for what reasons, yes or no?
Thanks, I think that's probably a little bit beyond the scope of this council meeting to go into those issues, but. Cara, maybe you can send. Some links about differences between charter and general law cities. Jeremy.
Happy to do that.
Next speaker is Karen Askew. Karen, go ahead.
First of all, I just wanted to thank you guys for going back to in person or hybrid meetings. I think it's, it's wonderful and I was under the impression that we'd be able to see what other residents. Were attending now that we'd gone to this and we can't do that. So I'm just requesting if we can figure out a way to do that. I was on the fire district. Meeting last night and they, they had all the participants showing. And then this is just, I'm not sure if you want to do this or not due to COVID, but we get to see a lot of Craig. If Mary Ann and Sarah could move closer to Craig, it would be great because then we could see all of them. It's just a little request. Thanks.
Thanks, Karen. So the, the reason that we see a lot of me is because I'm the one who's talking. When you'll see as I talk after about four or five seconds, it switches cameras from the wide angle one to focus in on me. If the other council members were talking, it would do the same thing for them. So you would be able to see them if they were talking. It's just a feature of how we have the hybrid room set up here. As far as visibility of the people who are in the audience, we do have one member of the public who's come in since the meeting started. She's living at the back though, and as you could see, when it zooms out, the cameras kind of cover the front. I think there is a camera up on the wall behind me. So when somebody speaks at the podium, there are two, two microphones for audience use in the room. And if anybody were to use those microphones, then similarly after about four or five seconds of somebody speaking there, it should, it should switch to that camera. So you would see who's speaking. But there isn't a camera that just kind of covers the whole audience, really just wide angle on the dais that captures those first two rows of seats.
Mr. Mayor, Karen may also have been referring to now with the new system that. There may have been change to the webinar capabilities in Zoom. And just to remind folks that there's two different kinds of meeting profiles in Zoom. One's called a meeting. It's usually typically used for smaller groups and webinars are usually used for larger groups. That functionality hasn't changed. Zoom has not made a feature available where attendees can see one another in the webinar feature. And we continue to use that to manage the meetings. I just wanted to add that.
Yep, thank you. If we do have committee meetings, though, those, those often are run as meetings rather than webinars, though. So for committee meetings, I think they tend to be smaller and for those, it may be the case that people will be able to see each other. That's something we will see as we start having committee meetings in here as well. Okay, who is up next, Jeremy, if anybody's left?
One last hand up right now. Greg, thanks, Greg Franklin. Greg, go ahead.
Get this unmuted. Okay, hey, congrats on getting this format going. By the way, we can't, how many council members are in attendance tonight? Because we could only, we can see Alfs on his home system, I guess. And it's not. Clear how many are present. I can see Mary Ann, we can see Craig is, so, so are there five council members on the call tonight or not?
There are four. Councilmember Richards is off on vacation. So there are three of us here present in the schoolhouse and Jeff Alfs calling in remotely.
Right, okay, well, it's going to take a little bit of getting used to. So. My wife Sue and I, Sue Low and I, we are, this is, this is on the affordable housing and wildfire. Issues. So just as a, as a prelude. Sue and I are not against affordable housing. But we want to see it done in an intelligent and thoughtful way within reason and consistent with the town's infrastructure and. Rapidly increasing wildfire vulnerability and most importantly, on the, on the values on which the, the town was established by its founders now. I expect you may have seen a piece written by Brenda Monks in the last couple of days, Bill Lane's daughter. She wrote a very poignant piece on, on this subject and if, if, if you haven't seen it or read it, I'd really commend it. Anyway. I'm very concerned about the prospect of. A 20 dwelling unit per acre upzoning anywhere in Portola Valley as part of this Rena process. And so I got to thinking about. You know, the application of any such zoning to some of the. Sites that are under consideration and that were recommended for. Review at the, at last Monday's Housing Element Committee. And when I started thinking about the Willow Commons project, which is the only one that we have any visibility on the application of the. The state density housing laws to some of these properties that are under consideration. So just as an example, because, because my, what my fear is, and that's what I would like some feedback on. And for each of you five council members to. To, to investigate is whether this 20 unit per acre upzoning is not really a de facto 36 dwelling unit, de facto zoning. Because of the application of the housing, state housing density law over which Portola Valley has no control. Or, or, or impact. So just as an example, what I took was one of the sites under consideration for upzoning is the country offices at the corner of Nathorston Alpine. That's a two and a half acre site. So if you apply a 20 unit per acre. Upzoning at two and a half acre site, that's 50 units. But if the owner or developer made an application to the state under the state housing density law. And did restricted the application to conform with the low and very low. Annual household income levels. They essentially get the benefit of the state housing density law, which is 36. Which on a two and a half acre site would mean that. As I understand it. The town could do nothing about a developer coming in and putting 90 units on that two and a half acres. And then when I thought more about some of the other sites under consideration that were discussed last Monday, like. Forty three, 94 Alpine, which is the empty lot next to Roberts. Which neighbors the Willow Commons site and then the Roberts parking lot. So I mean, my numbers may be off, but in aggregate, those two sites are about 2.3 acres. So if you had a developer that came in and committed and did restricted the development of those lots similarly. Basically, in aggregate.
Greg, I'm, I'm gonna have to interrupt you. We don't, we don't have our three minute timer going on this new Zoom setup, but I think you're well into three minutes now. Your point is well taken, but if you'd like to wrap up in 15 seconds or so, that would be appreciated.
Well, so I, I reached out to a couple of planning commissioners to sort of test, you know, their knowledge and. And essentially grade my paper. And one said it was an excellent question. They didn't know the answer. The other one, I haven't heard back from, but I understand it's been referred to town planner anyway. So I guess my, my request is, can you make sure you understand the application of this type of example? And make sure that all of the Housing Element Committee members are. Aware of the application of this type of scenario before next Monday, when they're scheduled to consider. Lots, Rena lots that are going to be evaluated. Lots, arena lots that are going to be evaluated for the Housing Element Plan.
Thank you, Greg. Are there any more hands, Jeremy?
Kristy Corley. Kristy?
Go ahead, Kristy.
Yeah, I have some comments regarding spot zoning. Are we reacting? To the requirements which subverts our planning process? This is not an emergency and it's an extraordinary plan to throw out our zoning and subvert. Our planning process. So. I'm just concerned about the spot zoning that it would cause. Neighbors in a circular direction around you. If you chose you're one of the seven and she probably has more to upzone. That we right now have seven volunteers to upzone in their neighborhoods and this is making residents nervous. And we don't know if there's more people out there that want to upzone and what will happen to us if so. So. Let's not ignore the planning with spot zoning. Are we creating an emergency situation by upzoning over the planning and zoning? That's already in place and that we worked hard to get in place. I'm all for affordable housing. I think that. We need affordable housing. In fact, I fought for the buses system so they could have transportation to get to jobs. When the buses were canceled. I went to meetings, I wrote letters, I. Believe in affordable housing. I don't believe in spot zoning. So I just want to say that for the record. And. That's about all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristy.
No more hands, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that brings us to the close of our first hybrid oral communication. And on to item four, presentation from the Resource Conservation District. Jeremy?
Mr. Mayor, the Executive Director of the Resource Conservation District of Samatay County. Yesterday let us know that she had a conflict that she had to attend some business with her. Child. So we're rescheduling her visit for a meeting in May.
Okay, great. Thank you. If you take this, then while I will take public comment on this item, if anybody has here for public comment on item four. Any hands?
No hands, sir.
Okay, that brings us then to our consent agenda. Consent agenda is approved on one roll call vote unless council member would like to pull an individual item. Members of the public may speak on any item on the consent agenda by raising your hand now.
No hands have been raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, would anybody like to pull an item from tonight's consent agenda?
I need to pull 5A just for a small edit.
Okay, 5A.
Minutes.
Anybody else? Is there a motion then on items B, C, and D?
So moved.
Moved by Mary Ann.
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Warikoff. Could you call the roll, please, Jeremy?
Councilmember Derwin.
I.
Councilmember Alfs.
I.
Councilmember Richards. Vice Mayor Warikoff.
Yes.
Mayor Hughes.
Hi. Okay, item 5A.
So yeah, I just have a small edit on the bottom of page 14 in the minutes, last paragraph. It references a back and forth between myself and Mr. Green. It was actually Don Bullard making comments on the timeline of the mapping and. Yeah, that project in general. So I think there's just two points where Mr. Green is referenced and it needs to be swapped out to Don Bullard.
Got it. So one on page 14, one for a slide on page 15.
Yes, actually, hold on. Yes, exactly.
Okay, so with those two edits, is there a motion?
I actually had one more. Okay. Very, very minor correction. Page six, my name is misspelled, but. As long as we're editing.
Oh, yes, I see. Under motion. Okay, so with those three edits, is there a motion to approve minutes?
So move.
Moved by Sarah, seconded by Jeff.
Sure.
Mayor Derwin, I promoted you, I'm sorry. Councilmember Derwin.
I.
Councilmember Alfs.
I.
Councilmember Richards, Vice Mayor Warikoff.
Yes.
Mayor Hughes.
Hi. Okay, and that brings us to item six, regular agenda. This is a public hearing. About a revised fee schedule for Town of Portola Valley's Administrative Building, Public Works Engineering, and Planning Departments.
And we're gonna turn over a very brief presentation to start to Cindy Rhodes, the Finance Director, and I'll conclude. Cindy, honors.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Hughes, Council and members of the public. My name is Cindy Rhodes. I'm the Finance Director with the Town of Portola Valley. I will be sharing just a very. Brief. Hopefully you can see that. Slide. This evening, we will be reviewing the proposed fee schedule for fiscal year 2022, 2023. The annual process of updating the fee schedule begins with reviewing the. Consumer Price Index. For this year, we, well, many years, we, years past, we use February's rate. So this February, the rate was 5.2%. For the fees listed in our fee schedule for admin, planning, building, public works and engineering fees. Those rates have increased by the CPI, which is 5.2%. We've also made a few additional changes, which I've listed here in this slide. These are the changes that we've included. Which adds a new fee for within the administrative section. This would include staff time for facility rentals. The first hour for staff consultation and review is free. And then the additional hours thereafter would be charged at the. Rate, the hourly rate for that position. And next in our planning section, we have two changes. Which is the planner, the planner hourly rate. That rate was also increased by the 5.2% CPI. Within the finance, the planning section as well, we've also increased the deposits collected. The purpose of increasing the deposits was just to more closely align. The deposits collected with the scope of work rather than. Reaching out and requesting for additional deposits. A higher deposit and in the initial application process is collected. At a larger amount. Moving on to the Public Works and Engineering section, we made a change. And just to clarify, this would be in the section. Under the driveway connection to the street and utilities. What was actually. The utilities and then it's also in the other projects, including without limitation for right of way landscaping and additional projects. What was adjusted here was the rate. The actual fee was eliminated and we added in a deposit and actually dropped that. The lower rate of that deposit to $95, up to $1,000 for the initial deposit. What we found was that there was no deposit collected. So previously. The plan review, there was no deposit collected, just a fee of $91. And what we found was that the planning, excuse me, the Public Works Director. When reviewing these projects at times would require additional plan review. But since we did not have a deposit listed in the fee schedule, no deposit was collected or charged. So this just more closely aligns to the scope of work. Also for. The Public Works Director adds a lot more flexibility. So if it's a project that he'd like to shift over to a contract engineer. Or inspector, he can do so and is able to charge at their hourly rate. Moving on, I, we would be discussing the additional fees for review this summer. And at this point, I will move it or. To Jeremy.
Thank you, Cindy. Appreciate it. And you can stop sharing the screen. Thank you. One, one thing I would note before I move forward, we did not, we're not recommending raising any fees related to use of facilities by members of the public. And that's been council directed for a couple of years and we've kept that intact. So as you can see at the bottom of the staff report, and this would be on page 45. The town staff is continuing to look at other fees as appropriate to capture. Revenue related to those activities that we don't currently see revenue for. So we were engaged with a member of our consulting team. Through planning and building department to look at a few fees that are listed here, general plan maintenance fee, technology fee. These are pretty traditional fees that you see in many other cities, if not all the cities. So we'll bring something through the September revision process that requires in-house Nexus studies. So we're doing that work. The other. The other fee that we're, we're looking at is a fee that can. Capture revenue to repair local roads that are damaged during construction projects, increase code enforcement for those construction projects. And do some garbage collection. So the town attorney and I are looking at that process right now. There may be a few other fees that we'd like to bring forth during the September revision process, but. As the activities get more complicated and we require more staffing, we think it's appropriate to. To explore these potential sources of revenue. And with that, I'd like to turn it back to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any council member questions about this item? I have one. I don't know if it's a formatting issue. I was just having trouble reading some of the sections of the fee schedule. For example, on page 57. There. Or for example, commercial without interior improvements, less than 1,000 square feet. Plan check and inspection, there are no fees listed. It just says per hour as billed and per hour billed and deposit based on valuation, but there's no numbers there on my agenda packet. Is that a formatting problem? Is there a spreadsheet that got truncated or am I misunderstanding and there weren't supposed to be numbers there?
So there weren't supposed to be numbers there. In previous fee schedules, we have had. It listed the same as well, that it's just per hour as billed or as, yes, as billed. The. We have a contractor for the building inspections. So we usually have the. Building inspector who's through as a consultant. So we go through their billing. That's why they're not listed on.
Got it. I think I understand that. So what I'm, what it's saying is that is. Passed through at whatever we are billed for it essentially. When there's a number. Then that number is a total amount charged. I was, because I was reading further down on page, for example, 58. And I, I think it's just like following the horizontal line across. I'm having trouble with that. I thought plan check. And inspection were like $635 per hour. And that would be my next question. That's why some of these hourly fees were ludicrously high, but it's because it's not hourly, it's total.
Right.
Okay. Okay, that, that was all I had for questions. So I will open the public hearing then for public comment on this item. Comment on this item.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor Rita Comas. Rita, go ahead.
Uh, thank you for taking my comment and looking through all the fees that are increasing. You know, I go back to. Why hasn't the Finance and Audit Committee looked at these new fees and also the status? Of the audit that the 2020 and 2021 audit, you know, it's hard for me, you know, like if someone says I need more money. But they haven't been publicly balancing their bank account. I know it makes me question and, and we, the community are concerned. About the status of the audit being done. And here it is, you know, I know that I listened to Howard's presentation. I know. That department needs more staff and more other equipment and whatnot. But it's, it's really hard to hear that it needs more money when the audit hasn't been done. And that's just my, my personal opinion. And I know I sound like a broken racket, but I've been asking about that for several months. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. I think staff has already commented on that audit question earlier in the meeting. Are there any other hands raised?
No, no, no more hands. One just went up, Kristy Corley.
Kristy, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm looking at the fee called environmental negative declaration and it's, it jumps quite a bit. Can you explain that one? Goes from 12:5 to 25.
That's, that is the number for the deposit as opposed to the rate. Is that correct, Laura?
Yeah, that's the deposit and that's just to align it more accurately with reality. These deposits were really outdated. And so even to go through the process of having a consultant come on board to start to do that analysis is much more expensive than it used to be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any more hands, Jeremy?
Number of hands raised.
Okay, I will close the public comment period then and bring it back to the council for any discussion, any discussion? No.
I think it looks good. I mean, I think we have to do this.
Jeff?
Yeah, no, thank you for, for putting this together. I mean, yeah, this is, this is. This is what we gotta do to keep up with, with inflation. So thank you. Looks fun to me.
Okay, looks good to me too. So is there a motion?
I will move to approve.
Move by Jeff, second by Mary Ann. Jeremy, call the roll, please.
Okay, Councilmember Derwin.
I.
Councilmember Alfs.
I.
Councilmember Richards. Vice Mayor Warikoff.
Yes.
And Mayor Hughes.
Hi. Okay. Thank you very much, Cindy. I'm bringing on to item seven, Council Liaison Committee Regional Agency Reports. Would you like to go first? Jeff, how about you, since you're out and. Fivers face.
Yeah, hold on. I'm just looking through my notes just to remember what I've, what I've been doing. I have, PCE is just completed, wrapped up interviews for. We had to fill five spots on our Citizens Advisory Committee meeting. We got some really good. The, the quality of applications is improving rapidly. It's interesting. It's we're becoming more of a destination for people who want to do community service and the. The caliber of volunteers we got this round was really impressive. So. We're, that's, that's great. That's, we're getting some really good, we're just getting good public involvement and people are really interested in what we're doing. That's always, just always encouraging to have when your organization is drawing good people to sort of join and volunteer. Let's see, we had an ad hoc Housing Element Committee meeting on the 18th. Sorry, I'm trying to remember what we talked about. Some meetings are blurring together for me. Sorry, give me one second. I'm just trying to find the agenda so I can be reminded of.
Did the affirmative?
It was a, sorry, what?
I was just gonna jog your memory, the affirmative, affirmatively.
Yeah, affirmative, affirmatively furthering fair housing policies was the first discussion. Just trying to just sort of talking about the history of discrimination and. Basically, the requirements that are built into this new element in terms of, of, of trying to make sure that our housing policies are inclusive and not discriminatory. And then we talked more about the housing inventory sites. And on, um, on May second, we will actually be coming back and, uh, we got a lot of good feedback from the committee and we'll be sort of continuing the discussion on May second and hopefully have sort of a, a final, um, kind of a, an initial rough draft of the housing inventory sites that will then come back for a, a draft housing element at our next meeting. Sorry, I'm still just, just looking through my notes to make sure I haven't missed anything else. Atrian Science was gearing up for another star viewing party. I, he do not remember the title of the date off the top of my head. I apologize. And, um, I think that's, I think that's all I had these last two weeks.
Okay, thanks. Laura?
My only meeting was also the, the ad hoc housing element committee meeting. And I think I just wanna, um, for those that haven't seen it and who are interested, there's a, a pretty good summary. So if you go to the ad hoc housing element committee meeting page, and then you go down to meeting recordings and you look in April eighteenth, there's a bunch of documents there that show all of the different constraints that we looked at or that Laura and staff looked at to prepare. Um, it was just a thorough review of what we've been calling the eight ideas. And then there were a couple of additional new ideas. And so that's all summarized in the meeting summary document that can be found under this, uh, uh, material section of that page. And it's also been posted on PV forums. So I just wanted to highlight that that was a, another really robust. You know, I think we had a hundred and fifty people and it went almost five hours. So it was a very robust and thorough conversation. And there's a lot of great material on the website for people who are interested.
That's, thanks, Sarah.
All righty. You know what? I'm gonna add one other thing. We also had a really nice meeting, a good meeting yesterday with, um, Alta Housing. It's an affordable housing, um, nonprofit. It was really informative. And that's the kind of outreach that Laura has been doing, um, to inform the process. So.
Which nonprofit?
Alta Housing.
Oh, yes.
The former PH Palo Alto Housing Corporation.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, Sarah.
On the fourteenth, I had a C CAG meeting. We started by giving a certificate of appreciation to the outgoing chair, Marie Wong. Then we had a, a report from the ledge committee. There are eleven billion additional funds in the governor's budget. We sent a letter of support to the governor's $400 rebate plan to, to offset gas prices, but we included means testing so that people say like me, don't get the rebate. As it is, you can get a maximum of eight hundred per household. So it goes by, uh, reg, car registration.
Do they exclude electric cars?
Pardon me?
Do they exclude electric cars?
I don't, I don't know. That's interesting. I don't know. I kind of think they probably don't because it, wouldn't that be difficult?
I'll let you know if I get a check.
Cars out, yeah. And the, um, the ledge committee had a whole list of support and oppose legislation, and this is mostly transportation. The two more controversial ones were SB one oh six seven, which is, um, a parking requirement for housing developments that are within a half mile of public transit. And the committee, uh, recommended we oppose and we opposed it. And then there was an SB nine two two that is a sequoia exemption for transit. They recommended we oppose it. We ended up proposing it. And then, uh, again, a whole list of ones were either supporting monitor or monitoring. Uh, we signed an agreement with Mariposa Planning Solutions for our first C CAG equity assessment and framework development project. And Mariposa Planning Solutions is headed by Chris Lepi, who I'm sure at least Jeremy knows him. We used to be at Transform, Chris. The next thing on the agenda, M T C one Bay Area Grant Cycle Three, O BAG three is opening. It's been seven years since O BAG two. There will be thirty three point five million total available for projects. M T C wants sixty percent for active transportation. Examples of active, active transportation are bike ped, last mile connections, roadway improvements with bike ped. Then last year, when we had our retreat, we always have a retreat in May, there were breakout groups on micro mobility, stormwater management and greenhouse gas reductions. So this year they did a follow-up. I've never seen them do that before. Like, okay, so how have we done? So they went through and enlisted, okay, we've done this on micro mobility. We've done this on stormwater. Here's the greenhouse gas reduction picture. Then there was, we talked about returning to in-person C CAG meetings. Whether that's gonna happen, um, do we want it to happen? I think the problem is we're really big. We can, the only place we can go right now would be where we used to go, which is the Samtrans Building, but they won't let the public in. So it's an issue with venue. So my guess is if we can stay remote, we'll stay remote. And the C CAG hired a federal lobbyist this year and they right now have, um, nine member directed funding requests, members being cities for, uh, San Bruno Water Capture Project, um, buffered bike lane in Millbrae, San Bruno, and this laundry, the landscape program that I will probably mention later. Hey, went to the commute.org meeting. And the first piece was about the, the acronyms are just amazing. The C CAG T D M policy rollout, T D M, wrote this all down so that you would understand it. Gosh, what did I pick down? Okay, so T D M is transportation demand management. Do you know what that is? Well, it's like a set of strategies that are aimed at maximizing traveler choices. Basically trying to provide travelers with effective choices to try to kind of get them out of cars if possible. So, um, this is a policy that C CAG approved last year and it is now rolling out. It became effective January one. It will, um, affect all new developments, that's commercial and residential, that will generate more than one hundred new average daily trips. So in our town, if we have a development, say a residential multifamily development that has between twenty and forty nine units, it will probably be triggered. And so if it's triggered, the developer will have to fill out this T D M checklist and essentially has to be accountable for the traffic that they generate, which I think is really fantastic idea. So we'll see how it goes. And then the other, um, item on the agenda was the, um, San Mateo County Transportation Authority, that's the TA, announced to call for projects for alternative congestion relief and transportation T D M programs. So one of, coming out of this is a program where commute.org has been working with the Jefferson Union High School District to figure out some programs that would reduce dependence on vehicles. All this teacher housing is coming online in that school district. So what they're going to do is they're going to have some shuttles that will go from the, the teacher housing to five different school sites. So we approved the, I think, commute.org sponsoring that program and, um, actually one guy on the board is sort of in charge of it. So that'll be a really interesting program. If it works out, they want to be a model for other communities with teacher housing. They have a lot of units in that project. I can't recall how, how many, but enough where this will make a difference. So last Friday night, for the first time in, gosh, long time, we had a in-person council of cities meeting. It was in Redwood City. It was at the Arroyo Green Apartments on Bradford Street. And, um, and the presentation was all about housing and transportation for all ages and all incomes in Redwood City. And the reason that it was appropriately hosted at Arroyo Green Apartments is because the Arroyo Green Apartments are a hundred and seventeen affordable housing apartments for seniors earning up to fifty percent AMI. So they're low, very low. And they are, it is open. They have, it is a partnership between Midfin, the developer, Dolan, the architect and Dev, DevCon Construction, with financing by Redwood City, County of San Mateo, HCD, California Tax Credit Allocation Commission, California Debt Limit Allocation Commission, Federal Home Loan Bank, San Francisco Union Bank. This is the idea of the stacking for the financing of affordable housing. It's very complicated. But this is working. And so it was, we were out in what's called, it's like the rooftop patio. It is a, it's a big room and then there's a patio out, which is lovely. And there are, um, boxes for community gardening. There are tables and chairs. There's a barbecue. And then we looked at a unit. It was a studio, but it was, it had a big window and it had a little tiny kitchenette and a bed and a desk and a bathroom. But they also have a game room and a library and a fitness room and a computer lab and two laundry rooms. And then the public benefit features are when you go outside, there's a creekside trail that's been developed. And the creek bank has been restored. And I'm pretty sure that all of you know Alex Funfeld. I'm pretty sure that grassroots ecology did that work. It's really, really nice. There's a mural on that side of the building and also in the ground floor, there's a childcare center. So it was so inspiring. It was so inspiring to see what can be done. And Redwood City, they, in this one block, they talked about that project that you were sitting in, there is a five thousand square foot lot with twenty units that Habitat built. And then there's market rate. And then there was, I mean, there was just a whole mix of different, um, housing and mixed use. Redwood City has submitted their housing element. They are the first in the area to do it. And they are a hundred and eighty percent of their arena. So I, it was a really, really fantastic evening to see a city that is so excited about building housing for everybody. We had a sustainability committee meeting with, um, I think this was the one with the speakers, Tom Cabot and Josie Delard, who did their electrification, um, presentation, which they've done all over the place. It's called best practices in electrification. It is really worthwhile. I mean, for example, did you know that it, that you don't need to get the biggest car charger? It is, they actually recommend against it. I mean, things like that. They had all sorts of little tips for do this, don't do that, um, so that you can make your hundred amp panel work by electrifying most of your appliances. This is recorded, so I would really recommend that you check it out. Also, the same, um, meeting, we talked about, uh, let's see, I think we had a really small crew. So I think they talked about their priorities again and their budget. And they're not doing a garden tour, which is really sad, but there was nobody on the committee who wanted to do it. I think we should start thinking about bringing in other people, even if they're not on committees to do specific projects. Cause the garden tour is such a fantastic thing. And I bet there's people in town who wouldn't mind looking on that, even if they're not on that committee. Oh, I did sit in on the upzone meeting, did any of you? That was really, really informative. And then Jeremy wrote a letter of support for the C CAG Laundry to Landscape Pilot Project because we, um, C CAG is putting in a member request for $420,000 for the pilot project. And I'm hoping that if we get the money that we can do some projects in Porterville. And that was that.
Okay, thanks. Um, I had.
Mayor, Mayor Hughes, sorry, can I, um, I just realized I forgot one of my meetings, which was, uh, in addition to the upzoning opt-in meeting, we, um, Al Sil and I sat in on the ADU, uh, meeting. So we basically, it was, it was sort of a, it was a focus group for people who had, uh, either had built or were interested in building ADUs. There were about, I think there were fifty or so people. There were like thirty in our group. So it ended up being a little more, I kind of, I mean, there's more people than was probably not great for a focus group because there are so many people. But we, we fielded a bunch, in my group, we fielded several, a lot of questions about, or people just talking about the ADU process and trying to answer questions. I thought it was a lot of really good feedback on our side. It sounded like both discussions. A lot of good feedback came out of both of them. And I think Jeremy was moderating the other discussion. So I don't know if you want to chime in on that. I just, I'd forgotten to report on that one.
Sorry about that. Yeah, our group is a little bit smaller, um, really good, uh, feedback, including some, I think, uh, important constructive criticism for the planning and building department to think about, um, particularly around their communication issues. So it was really, uh, I thought a good, um, and honest, uh, discussion around, uh, from those who, uh, bill taking this. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Um, I had two, ooh, excuse me, I had two meetings. I had a trails committee meeting. Let's see, that was pretty much all continuing business, nothing major to report here. Um, and then Parks and Rec. Remember that one. Um, oh, they were talking about, uh, converting one of the tennis courts to being dedicated pickleball. Have a net that's always up and paint the lines permanently and all that stuff. And that seems to be moving forward. They're figuring out all the details, requirements and where the oak tree drips sticky leaves and making slippery when it's wet and stuff like that. Figuring it all out. So, um, that will be continuing its process. Budget discussion, field user fee updates. Um, they're still working on that. I think those were the major elements there. So that was all of mine. I had a pretty light two weeks. Other than trying to figure out what to do with Wildfire Committee, which we proved earlier. Okay, is there any public comment on item seven?
With one hand raised, Kristy Corley, please.
Kristy, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a few questions. Um, I noticed in the ad hoc housing committee summary that the people that speak have one to two sentences when they may have said a lot more. So I'm noticing that the town council has word for word, but the ad hoc housing committee summarizes quite a bit. And I'm wondering if we can go back to really hearing what the people are saying. And that's one comment. So we can learn from each other. And, um, if you are, um, opposing bills, I'm hoping you can put the letters in the town council digest so we can see what was written and what bills were commented on. Cause you are going real fast and we want to know bill numbers and what you said. So is it in the digest now? That's a question right now. And then I have a few others. Can you give the full, the residents' full updates on the lobbyist review of bills? The Senate met, the housing committee met today in the Senate and all the bills passed, but one. Josh Becker's bill was seven to two and passed. So, um, I'm just wondering if you could give us a list of what he's giving you so the residents can see it as well. And then one piece of information from the zoning meeting, which I felt was very important. And to say the upzone meeting was really informative, I think we need to know a better summary than that. So a piece of information that I thought was a nugget is if you reach two fifty-three units by year four and the arena number years or eight years, um, can we stop building? The answer is no. It's against the law and we continue to take developments. And, and we cannot stop at the number that, um, is a. And we cannot stop at the number that is applied to us. There was lots of other things in the meeting, in the zoning meeting for summary. And I'm wondering when when the summaries would be put out and are they put out to date? So there was only 63 people there. Or, and I'm wondering when the summaries will be written? And if you can answer some of my questions, that'd be great. Thanks.
Thank you, Kristi. I'm not, I don't know if staff prepared to answer any of the questions now or if people prefer to answer offline. The bills that were being supported, I think that was CCAG, not
Yeah, that's a CCAG, that's a different agency. If you're interested in that, then go on the site and click on the, once you go to the board, then you go to the meetings and when their minutes are published, you can see the bills.
Okay, and there were, there were a number of other questions in there too, Jeremy. I don't know if you have any.
I'll, I think you answered one of them that I was going to answer. And then there are a few for Laura, Laura, did you want to answer some of the questions?
The video recordings from the ADU focus group and the opt-in meeting are on the website now on the Housing Element page under supplemental resources, I believe. There'll be a brief summary in the packet in the presentation to the Ad hoc Housing Element Committee. But in terms of a detailed summary of the opt-in meeting, we're not going to prepare that kind of detailed summary like we would for minutes because it's not that type of meeting. We will have more detailed notes from the ADU meeting because that was more about feedback and items that we want to take forward and learn from in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, there's one more hand raised, Karen asked.
Okay, go ahead, Karen.
Oh, hi. I attended the ADU meeting. I was actually in the session with Jeff. And I think there were about 40 of us in that one session. And unfortunately, there wasn't enough time for everybody to provide input. I think maybe five or six people spoke. And I'm wondering, so we really didn't go deep. And I know Melvin wasn't able to ask all the questions he was supposed to ask. I'm wondering if there's a way that we could maybe put a survey out to everybody and go deeper and get the questions from, from those folks that might be interested in developing an ADU or converting an existing structure or even learn more about some of the folks who tried and, and, you know, couldn't do it. I just didn't feel like there was only about 25 minutes for the actual question period because there was a presentation beforehand and then there was a recap after. So it'd be great, maybe if we could go a little deeper. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Are there any more hands?
No more hands.
All right, then that brings us to item eight, Town Manager Report. Jeremy.
I have a brief report this evening. A reminder that Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District is increasing their initial efforts as it relates to the potential development of Hawthorne property into a new open space preserve in town. I wanted to just mention this as we're anticipating meetings held by Mid Pen starting a little bit later this year. It could be as early as May or June. So I hope people will take a look at the news items that we put out should they wish to attend those meetings. And also that four committees, and Melvin remind me, if I get them wrong, just correct me. Sustainability, GO, the EPC and the WPC will be holding safety element meetings in May. Did I get that right?
Correct. Yeah, so we currently have a meeting scheduled with the EPC and WPC for May 17. And we have a geologic safety committee meeting scheduled on May 11. At each of those meetings, a memorandum will be presented that captures a section of the safety element. So geologic safety will be reviewing the geologic and flooding hazards memorandum. And both the EPC and the WPC will be reviewing the memo on wildfire hazards and preliminary evacuation routes. We're still in the process of scheduling a meeting with the Sustainability Committee for them to review a memo on climate change and resiliency.
Thank you. Melvin's taking the lead, obviously, on those issues a little better first than I am. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Karen.
Jeremy? Can, are you still tracking how much time we're spending on the PRA requests?
Yes, we are. The most time on the, on the staff side is spent by Melvin, who's spent probably somewhere between eight and 10 hours, maybe a little bit more at this point. And Cara Silver on the contract side. I think you had, did you want to provide any information on that right now? Cara, how much time you spent on it so far?
I, I think it's roughly the, the same amount of time.
Those are going to, those will be significantly increasing as the town attorney and starts looking through the various documents that we need to prepare for.
Can I ask a follow-up to that? And that is just in terms of how much the total fees accrued so far and what you anticipate through the end of the process of responding to the four filings so far?
Yeah, so I, I think we have billed about $2,500 so far with respect to the four outstanding Public Records Act requests and the Brown Act compliance letter. And then we would expect about $10,000 additional charges to review all of the responsive or potentially responsive emails and text messages and, and documents and get those ready for production for those four requests.
And on the staff side, Vice Mayor Warda Cup, I would expect, so we obviously don't charge the town for our time, but you know, a per raid rate per hour would be something along the lines of what Cara just described on the staff side. At least, that's a very conservative estimate.
Okay, thanks. Is there any public comments on item eight?
Yep, number of hands just went up. Number ending in 7516.
Carolyn, it's very hard for us on this. I don't, we could hear you much earlier, much earlier this evening, but
I'm using my cell phone right now because we're eating dinner. So I don't want to disturb my family time. But can you hear me now?
It's a little more clear, yeah.
Okay, great. So I wanted to know, we read in the local papers that Portula Valley joined nine other cities in the Monsanto lawsuit. And I just was wondering why this never was brought up.
Carolyn, it's getting very echoey again. We're having trouble hearing you again.
I think I heard
It's very garbled. I'm having trouble making out what you're saying.
I think I heard her, Caroline. Hopefully I got this right. She was asking a question about the Monsanto lawsuit and more information, why, why the public wasn't informed about that. I think I got that right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jeremy. Do we have a response on that or would you prefer to get back to her offline? Cara.
I'm happy to respond. So they, because that involved litigation, the council gave us authority to enter that litigation in a closed session. And there was a press release and notice to the public released about the lawsuit. I have copies of the lawsuit if any members of the public would, would like a copy. The lawsuit is being prosecuted in conjunction with county council and nine other city attorneys and town attorneys. And this group of plaintiffs has also retained a class action lawyer who will charge on a contingency. So there will be no out-of-pocket attorney's fees incurred by, by the town. But we are hopeful that we will be able to recover some funds that will help in our stormwater and permits and compliance requirements under the stormwater C3 permit.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, there's three more hands raised. Next is Kristi Corley. Go ahead, Kristi.
Yeah, I do have a question about if we had seven people volunteer to be upzoned from R1 to R3, which is one home on a lot to 20 homes to 36 homes on a lot. Then a letter was put out the next day asking for more volunteers from our entire community. And I'd like to know how many volunteers do you have right now to be upzoned in our city, count? I think the public should get this answer.
Is, is that the end of your comment, Kristi?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I think that that's probably a question more be directed to the housing committee and through that process there. It's not in front of the council and not on tonight's agenda. But that number is almost certainly will be available to the housing committee. Next.
Rita Comas, go ahead, Rita.
Hi there, thank you for taking my comment. I just wanted to comment about the, the PRA requests and the Brown Act requests. You know, it's the right of the citizens to ask for those things. And the way that it was presented, it was as if it was a reprimand to the citizens of this town. But the citizens of this town do have the right to ask for information to do PRA requests. And I just want to state that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I, yeah, before you do, I think it's important to realize that as Rita, you've been pointing out with your questions about the audit, the council is responsible for the town finances. And so this is an unbudgeted item that we were not expecting to have to spend money on. So the council is watching closely as these requests come in, what the workload is on staff, how much time that's taken away from other projects and what the cost to the town is of servicing those requests. So absolutely, the public does have a right to make these requests under law. The council, I think, is just interested in, in keeping track of what the impact is on the town of that because we don't have a funding source for it. We have had specific threats from some members of the public that they would be working towards bankrupting the town if necessary on these kinds of things. So it's, it's important for us to track these. Sarah.
Yeah, I mean, you more or less said what I was going to say. I think the only thing that I would add is, you know, I apologize if, if the question suggested a reprimand. I, the question really was to keep us all informed of, of the costs that are being incurred. And I also have been asked by community members about the costs and whether it's absorbed within the town or whether they're incremental. And so the legal fees are incremental. And so I just wanted to make sure I was aware of where that stood, what's anticipated going forward and to also keep the community abreast of the associated costs. So that's all.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Nan Shostak, please, go ahead.
Okay, this is about the safety element. I wanted to comment or compliment Melvin Gaines for being able to schedule the three meetings, meetings with this, yeah, Melvin smiling. The meetings, the three committees, it must have been like herding cats, getting all the consultants and all the committee members together. So Melvin, well done, really well done. And I have a question. Will the, I don't know what you call it, the memo, the, the draft safety element be available before the meetings for committee members to look at? If we're supposed to respond at the meeting?
Yeah, Melvin, let me just let Nan finish her comments first.
Yeah, no, that was, that was the question. Yeah, because I'm on the geologic safety committee. That's the first one up and we're on the 11th. So we're going to have to be quick on our feet to be able to respond at our meeting to the draft. As I understand the process, to respond to the draft safety element that the consultant is presenting.
Thank you, Nan.
Okay.
Melvin.
Yeah, so each of the memos will become public as soon as they're available. At minimum, it'll be 72 hours before each meeting. But my goal is to release them earlier. So for the geologic safety committee meeting, which is scheduled for May 11, the latest that it will be released is May 6, but it may be released as early as May 3.
Okay, thanks very much, Melvin.
Are there any more hands?
No more hands.
Okay, then that brings us to digests. And we have a slightly different structure for them this time on our agenda. Thanks to Melissa's reformatting of our agenda, which I think is far more, well, far more readable, nicely more readable than it has been historically. Some nice tweaks and improvements without major changes. So let's start off with the, I guess, in the index that go in anti chronological order. So first is April 21st. Any comments on April 21st digest?
No.
Page 82, no. Nope. Any comments on the April 14th digest? Actually, the index is the other way around from the pages. So page 70, I guess, is the April 14th digest.
No.
Mr. Mayor, there's a hand raised?
Yes, is there any public comments? It's, it's page 70.
That is the
Okay, let's go to, it's, it's just a bunch of agendas from you. Okay, public comment.
Rita Comas, please.
Yeah, my comment is on page 89. And just following up and asking, when is the next finance audit committee meeting?
Jeremy, do we have a scheduled finance committee meeting?
Cindy Brodus is the finance director's working with the committee to schedule a meeting in late May. That would be to review the draft budget. And then we would anticipate having a meeting in June to review the 1820 audit.
Thank you. Question is, are the minutes going to be updated for the finance committee meeting? Past minutes that are not on the website? If they could be, if they could be updated, then, you know, even if it was just draft minutes and they were there, people would at least be able to see what had happened in those meetings, even if it's not the final meeting minutes. And it would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. That's not directly on this agenda item, but we will certainly take that up with the finance committee and make sure that they have submitted all of their minutes to be posted to the website and that Melissa posts any which are not yet up there if they've been approved. Okay, let's see, back to the agenda. Okay, that concludes the open portion of this meeting. We have two closed session agenda items that we'll be discussing. In order to do that, we will be emptying out the schoolhouse. Looks like just Howard is left here. And closing down the Zoom meeting. So thank you all for coming tonight. And we look forward to seeing you again next time.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to take public comment on, on those two closed session items?
Oh, yes. Is there any public comments on those two closed session items?
No hands are raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Then we will close the meeting to the public and move to closed session. Yeah.
Now let everybody know when we're moving to closed session formally.
So you can stop the recording, Jeremy, or do I need to push a button over here?
I got it all. Thank you.